Good evening, welcome to the Murfreesboro City Council. It is September 24th. If you'll bow your head with me, I have the prayer and then I want to introduce someone before we have our Pledge of Allegiance. Father, I thank you for this day, this chance that we get to come and do your business. I'm thankful for the city and the people that we have here, the things that we are all blessed with every single day. Lord, as we see the things happening on TV, as we see the things that are happening across our country, but I want to ask you for your forgiveness for anything that we've had in our minds that's not from you, for any thoughts or preconceived notions that we've had. I pray for rest in our country, in our cities. Lord, I pray for mercy and grace and I pray for most of all compassion, that each one of us can have compassion for one another, that we may not agree, but Lord, that we know that we're all fighting for a common goal. Father, I ask all these things in your name. Amen. I want to introduce a young man that I just had the chance to spend some time with. He is a sophomore at Blackman and Ethan is, was very, or still is very interested in politics. So I want to probably go ahead and introduce your future mayor, Ethan Statura, who is going to do our Pledge of Allegiance. Ethan, the podium's yours.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice.
Thank you, Ethan. All right, there's a couple of things that we have on our consent agenda. Number, item seven, we're going to pull completely off and then number four, we're going to discuss at the very start of new business. All right, so you have items one through 10 excluding number four and number seven.
One through 11.
Excuse me. One through 11, sorry. 11 was hiding on me.
I'll move for approval with those changes?
Second.
Motion is second. Ms. Wright, please call the roll.
Vice Mayor Skels Harris?
Aye.
Mr. LaLance?
Aye.
Mr. Martin?
Aye.
Mr. Shackleton?
Aye.
Mr. Wade?
Aye.
Mr. Wright?
Aye.
Mayor McFarland?
Aye, and let me please announce that pursuant to the Governor's executive order, we are continuing with availability to meet electronically. So Ms. Skels Harris, or Vice Mayor Skels Harris, we can't see you, but we're glad you're here. All right, we will now discuss the Contract for Emergency Medical Services Medical Director, and this is presented by Fire and Rescue Chief Fokes.
Good evenings, Mayor and members of council. Tonight you have before you a contract for services for Medical Director. Dr. Galloway, our Medical Director since, I believe it was 2017, has resigned the position of Medical Director and we have, we've kind of been looking at options as far as where to go with medical direction for our fire department, for the emergency medical services provisions for that. We've discussed internally several different options and decided to go with Vanderbilt University Medical Center as the contracted service for medical direction. This is a little bit different than the way we've done it in the past with Dr. Galloway contracting with one person. We would be contracting with the entity of Vanderbilt and our lead medical director would be Dr. Jeremy Crook. Dr. Crook is born and raised here in Rutherford County. He was actually a volunteer firefighter and came up through Salem-Blackman Volunteer Fire Department, got licensed as a paramedic, became an emergency medical physician during his residency in et cetera, in Lexington, Kentucky, at the University of Kentucky. He's done a fellowship in emergency medical services at the, with Cincinnati, University of Cincinnati and Cincinnati Fire Department up there. Comes very experienced with emergency medical direction within those regards and we feel like he's going to be a great medical director to us provided from Vanderbilt. With this association with Vanderbilt, we also comes with a lot of what we call extras. If Dr. Crook is unavailable or out of town, we have other physicians that are listed within the realm of their emergency physicians that would be able to be medical directors for us as well as what we call, what Vanderbilt calls EMS Center of Excellence. And I'm going to kind of yield the floor to Jeannie Yatman right now with Vanderbilt. She's the Director of Lifeflight, their emergency services, and ask her to come forward and kind of explain some of the parameters that we would be getting through Vanderbilt.
Good evening, good evening, council. Thank you very much for allowing me to speak this evening on behalf of Vanderbilt. We are really excited about this opportunity. My Executive Medical Director, Dr. Stefan Russ, and myself, we have also met several times with Rutherford County EMS. We really desire to work collaboratively together. There are three things that we've discussed with them that we want to work on. We will be sure that when Dr. Crook or anyone else is on scene, that we have clear parameters about how to manage that. As far as having a physician on scene, we will also really be working with them to make sure we have clear delineation of who can call the helicopter as well as really working collaboratively and collegially with Dr. Galloway to ensure that we have the appropriate process. We are really excited about this opportunity to be able to extend our reach. We have been in EMS and have had event medicine. We do our own ground and critical care transport, so we're very anxious to start with this.
Thank you. And from what I'm, from what I'm told, we were, several of us were out at the Lifeflight base yesterday and from what I'm told from the pilots out there, that that is the premier base that all the Lifeflight people want to come and stay at that facility compared to some of the others.
Yes, sir, Mayor. It took us a long time to get to have the premier facility there, but we are extremely proud of that hangar and the facilities there and they are the best of the entire program. Yes, sir.
Awesome.
Yeah, and as a reminder, Vanderbilt is very invested in community in addition to the Lifeflight base that's here, Lifeflight 5. They also have the excellent pediatric facility over on Garrison Drive as well as cardiac facility here and they have purchased 86 acres in hopes of building a hospital in the future here in Murfreesboro. So they're very invested in our community. We just feel like that the medical direction that they provide would be excellent for our department. They provide a very similar arrangement for the Nashville Fire Department, whereas they have one lead medical director as well as several other medical directors at their disposal. This would also come with online medical direction provisions where we can contact the main hospital at any time if one of our paramedics are on the scene, needs to contact online medical control about something. And as Jeannie mentioned, unlike before, we are going to have the availability of having a physician on scene. Dr. Crook definitely plans on riding along with our, with our engine companies and ladders and rescue trucks as they answer calls. He lives in this community. He lives off of Rucker Lane in Brighton Park subdivision and so he's, he's planning on being very engaged. We look forward to that relationship and we feel like we're going to get a different aspect on medical direction coming from that angle.
All right, any questions?
Yeah, I've got some, Chief, and thanks for spending the time with me today to kind of indulge some of my questions, but I kind of want to work through some of that because I talked about some of the concerns I had about this with you this morning. So talk a little bit about why we think the timing is good for this and why it's necessary.
Well, the reason it's necessary with Dr. Galloway resigning, we need to have a medical director. And of course, with the issues that we have had going through EMS, one of those issues that we feel like that we've had is with the standard of care, the level of care that's being provided in our community and kind of coming to an agreement with those levels of care. And the reason that we contracted with Dr. Galloway to start off with was to have more of a harmonious relationship. You know, we were told by Rutherford County EMS that if we were going to practice to the level of our licensure, paramedic or advanced EMT, that we would have to have our own medical director, that we could not do that under them. That's what we were told in 2016. That's why we contracted with Dr. Galloway to have that type of relationship. We have not had the results out of that that we envisioned with having that joint medical direction and we just feel at this time that it would be much better to have our own medical director coming from a different aspect and those two medical directors could collaborate together on those ideas and what we're seeing as the standard of care and where it would be in this community.
And will you share your perspective on, from a timing standpoint? I understand the medical director piece, but you know, as we're negotiating with the county, as we have a task force that's trying to work through this and make some changes from a positive way, how does us having a new medical director in the middle of that process help that process?
Well, we've made everyone involved aware of this. Chris Clark, Public Safety Director, Carl Hudgens are both aware that we are pursuing the contract with Vanderbilt University. We have made St. Thomas aware that we are pursuing. Dr. Galloway works in the emergency room at St. Thomas. And so we made Dr., we have made Gordon Ferguson and Mike Carlton, their Director of St. Thomas EMS, very aware of the situation and what we're looking at with this medical direction. The main issue and what we kind of reiterated to Gordon and to, to Mr. Carlton is we just feel like that the physicians that work in the emergency department at St. Thomas are not St. Thomas physicians. They are contracted physicians with a physicians group out of Brentwood and we just feel like that having that capability of having Vanderbilt physicians under that Vanderbilt umbrella with the EMS Center of Excellence and everything that that brings onboard would be much better for us. And timing wise, I don't think it's going to have any negative implications whatsoever because we've been forthright and honest and frankly with them telling us they, we would need to have our own medical direction to provide that level of care, this is very consistent with that. And I think it's going to bring, you know, an aspect from our side to where we can work through those issues together instead of it being, because one of the things that has been brought up is that we are trying to determine, meaning Murfreesboro Fire EMS Division is trying to determine the standard of care for this community. Well, we do want to be involved in the standard of care for this community because we feel like it needs to be elevated, but we don't need to be making the final decision on that. That needs to be made by our medical director and we feel like having a separate medical director would have some insight there. There are other fire departments and EMS entities that have this arrangement in place and it works very well together. They come together and typically the protocols very much so match. There may be different levels that are provided by the first responder agency than, than by the transport agency, but typically it works very well together and it coincides hand in hand. So I don't, I don't think it'll have any negative implications whatsoever and it'll allow us to establish that basis to where we can come together for medical direction and the standard of care.
And do you have, talk a little bit about, so obviously Vanderbilt doesn't have a presence in Murfreesboro from outside of Lifeflight, but from a standpoint of standard of care and being our medical provider, but them not having a hospital facility here should, I mean, talk about that. Does it matter? Does it not matter?
I don't, I don't think it matters that they don't have a, basically an emergency department here. They, they do have facilities here, including their pediatric facility and their card, and their heart facility that's here located in Murfreesboro. There are, I know of departments or even EMS entities that their medical director is not even located in their own jurisdiction. They contract with a medical director that's not even located there. This is going to actually do better than that for us because we're going to have a medical director that lives here. Jeremy has been involved in emergency service. He's not just an emergency room physician. He's, he's been a volunteer firefighter. He's a paramedic. He is, he is very well ingrained in the community within that and I think that it will really raise the level of what he will be able to see as our providers provide care and how that interaction happens with Rutherford County EMS to where we can work that thing together. And I think it's going to enhance that.
Chief, after talking with the state, when Brandon, I can't remember Brandon's last, last name.
Brandon Ward.
But we, we have to have a medical director, do we not?
Yeah, one way or the other, we have to have a medical director. And in 2016, Rutherford County EMS told us we needed to have our own medical director to be able to provide advanced EMT and paramedic level skills.
So...
And that's when we contracted with Dr. Galloway.
Right, so when we got Dr. Galloway and then on Dr. Galloway's contract, he, he by contractually gave us 90 days from the date of resignation.
Yes.
Which is one of the reasons I think we talked about that it was critical for us to have a medical director, you know, in place. And then, you know, the other thing I think that we talked about when we were going through the workshop, I guess a month or so ago, that, you know, it, it sounded like some of the opportunities that we were working on were not necessarily with medical direction but with having a second set of eyes. And I do think that is a good, a good thing to have that, that second set of eyes. And then the other thing I will say, you know, Speaker Sexton was here yesterday in an offline, another conversation we have, and I am not getting into the politics of certificate of needs and all of those things that go along with a new hospital, but you know, there's a lot of articles that's been, that have been published over the last month or so and I think we have a significant portion of our population that does drive back and forth to Nashville that does go to Vanderbilt. So there are a lot of our, our peoples, including family members, and this is not anything against St. Thomas. I think we have a great medical facility with St. Thomas and healthcare in Murfreesboro is, in my opinion, turned into a regional complex with people from Bedford County and different places coming in, but you know, we do have people who are, have utilized Merle Coley, who's a Dr. Abu, heart surgeons here in town. So there's a good presence here.
And Mr. Martin, we, on the, on the not having an emergency facility here or not necessarily transporting to that physician, we would have online medical direction via radio directly to Vanderbilt to where any medical direction would be needed would go through that. Those physicians would be aware of the protocols and the levels of care that we do, just like they do with Nashville Fire and, and what we could be doing on scene or what we should be doing on scene if it goes to a medical direction level. But I think it's going to really improve what we have as far as the ability to have someone ride along with our, with our companies, see the dynamics that are happening on, on scenes with, with calls that are happening with both us and EMS and provide insight into the true level of care that needs to be provided for our community.
Mr. LaLance? So just to clarify a couple of things, in the, in the agenda package, it says that the, the current medical director in his contract with MFRD effective upon a contract with a new medical director. Is it 90 days or is it when we get a new one?
Well, in, in his original contract, he has to give us 90 days notice when he resigns. Dr. Galloway did state that if we had issues finding a medical director or otherwise, that he would be willing to stay on until we found one.
Okay, so we're in no hurry. I mean, I guess the point of that is we're not in like a hurry to get one done necessarily, right? I mean, it's, he's gonna, we're going to have a medical director until we find a new one.
Up to the 90 day point or, you know, if he's willing to stay on, yes. But I mean, it's, it's to the, you know, he basically expressed his desire to no longer be our medical director.
All right. So a couple of questions about Dr. Crook. Does he work in Nashville at Vanderbilt Hospital?
He works primarily at...
Dr. Crook works at Vanderbilt-Wilson County primarily. That's the hospital. That's in fact where he is tonight.
Okay.
Yes, sir.
And so did he just move here, back here or something? I mean, from Cincinnati?
Yes, sir. He just finished and he just came back from Cincinnati.
All right. And Chief, just kind of quickly, have you consulted with Dr. Crook over the last six months or so since all this stuff has been going on about the, you know, six-point leads or 12-point leads or, I mean, has he's been somebody that you've been in touch with during all this process?
We haven't talked directly about particular issues with EMS, but when he knew he was coming back to this community and where he was going to settle in Nashville, he's expressed his interest to us about potentially being a medical director in the future, not knowing because Dr. Galloway expressed to us beforehand, even when we signed on with him, that he was going to be retiring within the next two to three years and, you know, and so Dr. Crook had expressed that. I think he's also expressed that interest to Rutherford County EMS to be able to provide that for his community. He's very invested in the community. He, he lives here. He actually does practice here some on Lifeflight 5. They have to do rotation time on the helicopter, so he is here practicing quite a bit on the, on the helicopter.
He does fly, he does fly out of the base here at Lifeflight 5 as well.
Okay, but we wouldn't necessarily expect him to be around commonly throughout the day when business is being done. He's going to be in Wilson County. I mean, that's, I, and I, look, I don't know that it matters. I'm just kind of...
I think that's where he, he primarily is probably going to be working, you know, several shifts a week. Yes, sir. He would be there, several shifts a week.
Okay, I mean, I'm just, for me, I guess I don't expect a doctor to be taking time away from their real job to, to come here for that amount of pay, but...
I think this is a passion.
All right, I'm good with it.
I think that's a passion and I think we have to acknowledge that and he is, he's extremely passionate about this type of work and it's something from, you know, our student who did the Pledge of Allegiance, who wants to be a future politician. I think he saw, and this is what he's wanted to do his entire life, and he, he's real excited about it and I think we're going to see him a lot.
That'd be awesome if we do. So a couple of big picture things that I saw were mentioned that are, that are a little off topic, but, well, not off topic, but aside from specifics of Dr. Crook, which I would have no idea of how to gauge necessarily, but other than just having this for five minutes or 10 minutes or so here, but you know, I will tell you a couple of things that I will mention, you know, I think this probably shouldn't have been on the consent agenda, first of all. Secondly, I'll say that I think from what we've learned through this EMS discussion that this piece of the pie is probably pretty doggone important to what we have going on in the bigger conversation with trying to grow this partnership and build this, you know, kind of new, stronger partnership with, with Rutherford County EMS. Look, I've brought up the medical director situation a number of times. I, I don't know that I know exactly how to fix it. I don't know if I should feel like I need to know who this person is a little bit more before I say, yes, I want you to sign up and I want you to be this person who's going to lead this discussion because I think one of the biggest issues that we have with the, the EMS discussion, the MFRD and the Rutherford County EMS discussion is the ability for the, the organizations, particularly the medical director, whoever is leading the medical discussion, to be able to come together and have a substantive, rational, reasonable discussion and come up with some really good solutions that make sense for everybody. You know, from looking at a piece of paper and I, man, you know, I, I trust what everybody, I guess, is trying to say. I just, I'm, I'm having a little trouble feeling like I'm prepared to say, to put my stamp on it and say, I'm just committed to go all the way and say, yeah, this is the person that's going to be absolutely right for that job. It's really important to how the success of that partnership works out, I believe. So I'm...
Dr. Crook has...
Struggling a little.
Dr. Crook has expressed his desire to make that partnership work out as well. He actually did his internship, original internships under Dr. Galloway and knows Dr. Galloway very well and feels like that he can communicate very well with Dr. Galloway and we can really work these issues out with Rutherford County EMS as it relates to the level of patient care, the different patient care issues that are going on and we're, we're making good progress, I feel like, after the first meeting and I think that, that we're making good progress. And I, that's one of the other things that makes Dr. Crook especially desirable for us to have him as our medical director is because he's born and raised in this community. He's very invested in this community. He knows Dr. Galloway, worked with Dr. Galloway and he wants to mend those bridges. I mean, he volunteers for Rutherford County Fire Department right now. He still volunteers, so...
I think all those things do sound great. I mean, I honestly, if he was here and I had the chance to ask him, I think what I would ask is, you know, if there's a discrepancy by, from what he thinks is the best level of care and we're going to, I'm going to use the old fashioned, the old example that we've all picked on a million times in this conversation. If he thinks 12-point leads are the best and they think six-point leads are the best and there's no moving, they won't change, how's he going to deal with it?
I think from a physician's standpoint, what he would say if he was standing here in front of you is he would say, he would look at the evidence and they would have a collegial conversation and decide and look at the evidence and look at the best practice and decide, because we've got to keep with the patients first. We've got to do what's right for patients and we, that's the most important thing here is that we don't lose sight of that. And I firmly believe that the physicians that I work with would be having those kind of conversations.
And I think the other thing too, that is a little different than what we talked about in our meeting, and this is after conversations with the state. I mean, ultimately unless the city of Murfreesboro has their own ambulance service, the, the medical director of the county is the final say, period. So if the county medical director says, we're using six-point leads and that's because, or whatever, you know...
Yeah, that's, that's the...
The, the, the county medical director, as long as that's the primary transport company inside the city of Murfreesboro, they make the final decision, the county medical director. And I think most doctors and most of the ones that I've worked with all want to do what's best for the patient. So if you have two people who are arguing over semantics, I think both of them, just like you said, are going to sit down and, and work through that. I mean, regardless, I think it is the county's medical director that will make those, those final, the final decisions if there is a discrepancy.
Mayor?
Stefan Russ, who is the Executive Medical Director for Lifeflight. Again, he's very vested in this and he's met with Director Hudgens. He, he's, have spoken to Chris as well. He's met with them several times. I went and met with them once and we, again, really desire that, for this to be collaborative and we will work collectively with whatever Dr. Galloway says.
Mayor, I have a question. Chief, you could answer this. Could you speak to why this contract's with Vanderbilt and not with an individual?
Yes, I think Vanderbilt does it a little bit different with their physicians since they're employed directly through the hospital and not a separate physicians group. Like I mentioned, St. Thomas has a contract with the physicians group to provide staffing to their emergency department. Vanderbilt employs their physicians and Jeannie may be able to answer that question better, but they, they typically want to have their, their physicians covered under their liability and malpractice insurance, just like they would be working in the emergency department or on a helicopter when they're working for us and making those decisions, but I'll let Jeannie answer that.
Correct. Yes, sir. Vanderbilt is self-insured, so therefore that's why the contract is with Vanderbilt.
What's the term of the contract? Is it year to year or what, what's the term of the contract?
One year. Two years.
Two years.
Two years with automatically renewed one-year terms.
Okay, well, one question because there's a, in the recitals, it says, the city, whereas the city and our CEMS have entered in a, into an inter-local cooperative agreement regarding the coordination of, have we done that?
Yes, we have one in place now. It's been in place since 2016. We have to have that agreement in place for them to be able to transport patients in Murfreesboro.
So it's under existing, under the...
And that is what we are looking at renegotiating now as part of the improvements to make to the system.
Okay, so it's existing one, okay. Not the one we're trying to renegotiate?
Yes.
Okay.
Hey Chief, can I ask you a question?
Yes, sir.
Under the fiscal impacts, it says 12,000 from the medical director currently and the 12,000 and the decreased use of the contractual service account for the training. And I know of a lot of this part about the EMS is the accessibility to training and the cost of training. Is that, is that something the new medical director is going to pick up to start training or is this just a loss?
I jumped in, sorry. I know you didn't direct the question to me, but I wanted to answer the question because I think...
All good, as long as it gets answered.
Absolutely. I think there, there's so much more than just the medical director. You know, we want to be able to offer continuing education. We want to be able to, to share, you know, we are very fortunate at Vanderbilt to have a lot of experts and amazing physicians who do wonderful things and I think being able... we want to be able to offer continuing education. We want to be able to share, you know, we are very fortunate at Vanderbilt to have a lot of experts and amazing physicians who do wonderful things, and I think being able to share that information is from, that's where we would see this from a medical direction, the CME standpoint.
Thank you.
Mayor, I had a couple of other things. One, Chief, I know I mentioned this to you today, and the rest of the council may not feel this way, but the fact that, and correct me if I'm wrong, that the medical director role was a part of the RFQs that we did, that was included in that.
Yes.
I'm really struggling with us making this decision at this particular point in time. I understand the resignation of Dr. Galloway in some cases forces our hand. I called Dr. Galloway this morning just to have a conversation with him about this, and, you know, he is willing to continue to serve as we work through these things, and I'm not speaking for him. That's just what he said to me. But I think if we had the ability, if he was willing to do that, so that we can act in good faith as we're negotiating with the county, just my personal opinion, the council may not agree, I don't think we're honoring our agreement to operate in good faith and work with the county by bringing in a new medical director. That seems a little bit like we're trying to push our weight around in that conversation, and I realize others may not agree with that. But I don't know how it can be, hey, stop working on the RFQs, and we extract a piece of the RFQ and choose to use that piece. That's just the way it looks to me. So, I know we talked about that today. With all due respect, it has nothing to do with Vanderbilt or anybody else for that matter. It's about us trying to, you know, our reputation and making sure that we do the right thing with the county. I personally don't feel like it's the right thing. Again, that's not anything directed towards you or Jeremy. So, I would not be in favor of this at this moment, but that is purely a timing issue. That's not about anything else other than that, because I don't think we're giving ourselves the effort to put our best foot forward with the county. Just my opinion. I do have one other comment, and Rick mentioned this, and then I'll shut up. The fact that this was on the consent agenda really bothers me, and so I don't know enough to know how that decision gets made and who made that decision, but I'd like somebody to address that.
I'll address it. Anything on a consent agenda can be pulled off by council and addressed in full, and everybody's prepared to do it. Council communication's the same. It's a time management issue. You know, this is something we've talked about quite a bit. We have other meetings about it, and so it was, you know, back to your original question, we didn't ask Dr. Galloway to resign. This isn't anything that has to do with negotiating with our CMS or the conversations that we're having with them. He chose to do that, and we chose to, and we have to have a medical director, and we chose Vanderbilt. Separate apart, has nothing to do with the RFQ. It's, this is a separate contract from that, so those should not be mixed together, those two separate things. Because it seemed rather efficient, it's not a high-dollar contract, we're aware of the situation, it went on a consent agenda. But as I said, if it's come off, anything on the consent agenda can always be pulled off. It's always prepared to...
Mr. Martin, can I, can I address the whole situation about the timing?
Sure.
One, just like I said, we were told by Rutherford County EMS in 2016 that if we were going to practice at the level of licensure that we needed, we needed to have our own medical director.
Do you mean separate, do you mean our own medical director, or separate from their medical director?
We needed to contract with the medical director, that they would not provide it. For Rutherford County Fire and for Laverne Fire, it's kind of provided under their umbrella. They don't contract with a separate medical director, but we were told by Rutherford County that we would need to have a contracted medical director to be able to provide that.
Which we've had.
And they suggested that we contract with Dr. Galloway to keep things consistent, which we did in an effort to try to work through those and keep things consistent. And what we have met with is, and I mentioned this to you today, when we've pushed stuff forward of concerns to Dr. Galloway, Dr. Galloway pushes that straight to Rutherford County EMS and asks what their opinion is, and that gets us nowhere on the concerns that we have. We're asking for his expert opinion, and it's pushed to them to say, what do you think about this? And it kind of leaves us in alert as far as trying to improve care in the community. And this, we do not feel like, and I think that Carl Hudgens and Chris Clark and I have had independent conversations, and I think that they, our current interlocal agreement allows for us to have our own medical director, separate of them. So, I don't think we're violating any of the provisions of what we're trying to work through together with the interlocal agreement, the new interlocal agreement that's being worked on. I think we're doing everything in best faith and best effort, and I think that they understand that this brings a new perspective to the table of, you know, kind of, hey, let's look at everything that's out there and what we can do to better enhance patient care. And they have agreed with us in the last couple of weeks. I've talked to Chris Clark, and they're changing some procedures on the way that they handle certain calls that we have mentioned in the task force meeting, including chest pain calls that are, that are consistent with what we've been asking them to do for some time now. So, we're making progress, and I don't feel like this is going to slow down that progress whatsoever. In other words, I feel like it'll enhance it.
I think to be clear, and really talking about a few things Ronnie said, I don't think the council can be any more clear to staff that we want to get this thing with Rutherford County EMS worked out. I don't think that there could be any ambiguity in what we've told them. At the same time, you know, I appreciate Dr. Galloway, made some comments about, Dr. Galloway, a couple of weeks ago. Dr. Galloway has been a staple in this community, and Dr. Galloway did a good, a good job for us, but at the same time, and I don't know how y'all run your businesses, it may be different where you work, but if someone resigns at my, where I am, I don't get the opportunity to say, well, hey, can you please stay for a little longer so we can get this worked out? My guess in the, in most businesses, if somebody resigns, they resigned. And so, my opinion, we want to work this out with Rutherford County. We've said that, but we've got an obligation to 285 firefighters and first responders that we have in our community and 150,000 residents that we have to have a medical director. And, you know, in my opinion, having an independent medical director at the table as we're having these talks, I don't know anything about all these discussions on the medical side, so I think it'd be great to have another set of eyes and another set of ears to be able to say, well, here's some of the other things that we do. So, that's the way I look at it, but I have no problem with, you know, it's not like we're talking about a small organization. I mean, Vanderbilt is seen as one of the most progressive. As a matter of fact, I read an article the other day where, you know, the COVID virus and the vaccinations, a lot of that's being done at Vanderbilt. So, I don't have a problem with it at all. I think we have to look at what's best for Rutherford County, but I'm a council member. I'm not a commissioner, and I think I have, my thing, we have to do what's best for Murfreesboro, and this is clearly a good, a good opportunity.
And Mr. Martin, just one other clarification. On the, on the RFQ/RFP process, this wasn't just directly pulled from the RFP process. We actually considered going with Vanderbilt originally in 2016. Dr. Slovis, who I think is kind of semi-retired, he's kind of taken a step back, but Dr. Corey Slovis is known as one of the best emergency medical services physicians in the United States of America. And he, you know, when I lived in East Tennessee and worked in East Tennessee, everybody knew of Dr. Slovis and the Vanderbilt system and everything that they do. We strongly considered that in 2016, but really desired to try to work it out with Rutherford County and do that with Dr. Galloway. And so, I don't think that came from the RFP or the RFQ process. I was very aware of the way that they do medical direction through Nashville Fire before we ever did that. It's a team approach to medical directions that had just contracted with one person. And so, I was very aware of that before we ever put out an RFP, and it's something we had considered before. And when Dr. Galloway, Dr. Galloway resigned before, and we asked him to please consider stay on to where we could try to work these things out together, and now he's resigned again. And when we did that before, we actually considered again looking at Vanderbilt for that service. And so, it's, this is nothing new that we've looked at just immediately just because of the request for proposals. That's something we've been aware of for a long time.
Well, and the only point I will make is that it's not like all of us haven't been under a certain amount of duress during this. This has been an extremely difficult thing on a lot of people, and so I'm not sure I think it's a fair comparison to say, Dr. Galloway resigned, and therefore, he quit like anybody else did. These are some tough things that were going on. There were people changing positions left and right, and, you know, there's a lot of people who have, you know, basically had their fill of this whole conversation. So, I'm being very mindful of that as we're talking through this. And last comment, and then I'll shut up. Back to the consent agenda. Craig, with all due respect, I just think this was a big enough deal that it was poor judgment on your part to put it on the consent agenda.
The consent agenda doesn't have any procedural differences between any other item on the agenda. I expect the council would read everything on the consent agenda, just like they did every other thing. So, the fact it is on consent agenda has no bearing on the merits of the issue whatsoever.
I still think that.
That's fine.
Just, I don't want to assume, so I just want to make sure. If this is approved tonight, will Dr. Crook be available for our meetings going forward with the county?
Yes, he will.
Madeline, do you have a comment?
Uh, yes, I do. Thank you, Mayor. I've been going back and forth on this, hearing different comments, and I'm really torn here. In my mind, what I keep hearing is that Dr. Galloway resigned, and then I heard that he was thinking about retiring in two years. So, when I think about resigning, this is just me personally, I think about someone quitting, there being some kind of underlying problem, because I'm asking myself, why did he resign rather than announce his retirement? That's one thing. I'm just asking this to myself. And another thing, I just, I would personally, because I want to be fair and everything, I would personally like to talk to Dr. Galloway and see why he resigned rather than retired. And if in his contract, someone said, Rick or someone said, I don't know, that he is willing to stay on, that may be a good thing right now. Until I guess I can get more information, I know we don't like to hear the word table, so we can go and vote on it tonight. That's fine with me. But I don't think it's a bad idea to table this.
Thank you, Madeline.
I keep, the only thing I keep coming back to is, it just seems like in my mind, and really honestly, I'm, I feel like I'm pretty close to being okay with this and all that kind of stuff. I'm not, I'm not like, you know, vehemently opposed by any stretch. I mean, you know, I think this probably all makes a lot of sense. There's just something nagging at me that kind of feels like I need to check a couple more boxes before I make a vote on this because of, and it's only because of how important I think this particular decision is to the other situation that we're trying to work through. And I think I know the answers, but I don't know if I know those answers right this second. That's probably something I could have done, but I couldn't do it between last night, when I read the agenda, and tonight while I'm sitting here. I'd be all good for a week. When is our next meeting, by the way, the RCMs?
October the 8th.
The 8th? We weren't going to do because of spring break for most people.
They contacted back today requesting that we go ahead and conduct the October 8th meeting, even though they're going to have some people out, but...
I'm out.
Oh, you mean for the EMS?
Yeah, for EMS. I'm out.
I thought you meant for a regular council meeting.
No, 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 for EMS, for like the joint.
Yeah, they, I'm sorry, I misunderstood your question. Yeah, the 8th is, as the chief said, is what is proposed right now. We had it set for the 27th?
Yes.
Yeah, for the 27th. That worked for everybody, and then they asked today if we wanted to move it back to the 8th.
I can't do the 8th, but y'all don't have to have me there.
8th. Um...
We haven't said it yet, so...
I would probably be okay, but here's, here's the deal. I think I'd be ready by next Thursday to vote on it. I would prefer that. That's just my preference. I think, I really honestly think I'd be ready to vote on it, and I, that's, that's a week away. That still gives us a week before the 8th. If, and it's up to you guys, if y'all want to go ahead and vote on it tonight, I'm not going to bring up necessarily a motion to defer it unless y'all kind of say you want to do it, but if I get a bunch of head shakes, y'all want to go ahead and vote, I'm good with it. I probably would make a game time decision on how I vote as far as when she calls my name. I gotta really think through that a little bit, but probably I'd say that'd be an abstain at this point. But I'd be, I think I'd be really prepared to vote on it in a week from now if that wouldn't create any big timing issues or whatever.
And I just ask Jeannie and Dr. Russ, or I mean, Dr. Russ and Dr. Crook likely could be available next week to be here, so you could make Dr. Crook, and I'll...
And I can make a phone, I can make a couple of phone calls, I mean, that kind of thing.
We'll make him available to you all if you want to contact him by phone.
I'll accept a little bit of responsibility for not having a chance this week to look at my agenda until last night, but that's, so I'll take that responsibility, but I just couldn't get it done with the way my days have laid out this week, so.
Mayor.
You okay for a week? I mean, you okay for a week? Are you okay for a week, Kurt? I mean...
Very much so.
All right. I'll make the motion in that we table it till next week.
Hold on, Madeline.
I think Madeline had something to say.
Oh, I apologize, Madeline.
No, I'm sorry. Mayor, I thought you indicated also that you would be out of town on the 1st. Will you be here next week?
That's okay. Y'all can, y'all can discuss it.
No, I think we all need to be present for this vote. This is just my opinion. I think everybody needs to be present.
I can send my vote by proxy. It's going to be a yes.
Oh, yeah.
So, I, yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, I can, I can. We have fall break next week, but yeah, this is a no-brainer to me.
Thank you, Mayor.
All right.
Kurt, go ahead.
No, I'm the...
We have a motion on the floor to defer.
Second.
Motion is second. Ms. Wright, call the roll.
Vice Mayor Skels Harris?
Aye.
Mr. LaLance?
Aye.
Mr. Martin?
No.
Mr. Shacklet?
Aye.
Mr. Wade?
Aye.
Mr. Wright?
No.
Mayor McFarland?
No.
Motion passes.
What happened?
Wait a minute, hold on. Let me ask a question.
Yes, Madeline.
We were voting on what, to defer it?
To defer, yes, ma'am.
Okay. I'm sorry, I'm a no. I'm sorry.
Are you wanting to change your vote?
I'm a no, I'm sorry.
Okay.
Motion to reconsider.
Then it, then the motion to defer is... Do what? The four goes the other way.
Goes the other way.
Yeah, it fails.
Yes, sir, Adam.
I was just going to, so the motion to defer failed, is that right?
No, it passed 4 to 3.
She changed.
She changed her vote. Oh, so Madeline, you're...
4 to 3, not to defer.
Okay. All right. So, 4 to 3, my fault. So, 4 to 3, it failed, so we'll, we need a motion to vote on this.
Motion to vote.
I have a motion. Do you have a second?
Was that approved or not?
What is the motion for?
Okay.
Sorry.
Second. Madeline, we have a motion on the floor to approve the contract.
Oh, no, we're going to vote on it, right? Because I'm a no.
Okay, we...
And I'm getting a delay, Mayor. I'm sorry, I'm getting a delay in this speech, but it's not your fault, I'm sure.
All right.
I'm going to make a motion to reconsider the motion to defer, and let's have some discussion on that so I can clarify.
Okay, so we had a motion that will die for lack of a second, so we now have a motion to reconsider the vote on deferral. This is getting comical. Sorry. No, it's all right. Yeah, hey, we got Robert's Rules of Order back there. So, all right, we have a, is there a second on the motion to reconsider to the deferral?
I think I should second it.
There you go. All right.
Discussion.
Do we have discussion on that?
Yeah.
This is a motion to reconsider deferring the vote.
We basically are, the deferral failed, so we're, we got another motion to defer it.
I just want to make sure everybody was on the same page.
Yeah, we've circled around, we've circled around to ourselves again. My comment, and just wanted to make clear that, you know, what we, what we have done is say, said that by deferring, we have the opportunity to see in person the individual that we're talking about. If you have particular questions about the conduct and how he's going to conduct himself in that position, you would have that opportunity. I think we've been, where's our Vanderbilt people, that he might be able to be available next week. So, if he's available next week, it kind of gives us a different window into what this position could be, gives us an opportunity to consider this contract for another week. And I think, quite honestly, this would give us a prudent way of moving forward with some additional information that we don't necessarily have tonight. So, I truly would encourage you to vote for the deferral so that we can resolve this within a week's time.
All right, we have a motion is second. Ms. Wright, please call the roll.
Vice Mayor Skels Harris?
No.
Matt, so Madeline, you're, this is for deferral.
Are you voting to defer the vote or against deferring the vote?
Against deferring it, yes.
Okay.
Okay. Mr. LaLance?
Aye.
Mr. Martin?
No.
Mr. Shacklet?
Aye.
Mr. Wade?
Aye.
Mr. Wright?
No.
Mayor McFarland?
No.
All right.
All right, the deferral fails. So, we need to either make a...
I'll make another motion. I'll make a motion to deny the Vanderbilt contract.
Okay. Have a motion to deny.
So, we had four, four no's to defer.
Yes.
All right, that motion's going to fail for lack of a second.
No, I, I'm hearing a delay, Mayor. What was the question, please? What was the motion?
It failed for lack of a second for denial of the contract.
Okay, I want, I want to second that.
You want to make another motion?
I'll make a motion to deny, to deny the contract.
Sorry. What was his motion?
To deny the contract.
Deny the contract, okay. And Ms. Skels Harris seconded it.
Yes.
Yes.
All right, discussion.
So, you're making a motion to deny the Vanderbilt contract and deny the MD Dr., Dr. Crook to come as well?
Correct.
Okay.
I, I just feel like, just comment on why. I mean, I, my personal opinion, it's not allowing us to move forward under the circumstances that we said we would move forward. And I know there's been a, a different perspective about that from some on the council, which I respect, but I just don't think we can negotiate in good faith when we bring a new party to the table in the middle of the discussion. So, that's why.
I don't feel comfortable until talking to Dr. Galloway about why he resigned.
Then why didn't you want to defer it, Madeline?
Yeah.
Well, I'm saying, we were going to bring them in, but the more I'm hearing about this, the timing, I think my number one thing is timing of this. And I think the timing overrides my defer.
I mean, deferring, it gives you the time to consider those things, doesn't it?
No, but what I'm saying is, I, I think it's bad timing to do this, is what I'm saying.
Oh, I thought you meant timing on, I'm sorry, I thought you meant timing on the vote.
No, I'm sorry. I can see how you misunderstood. No problem.
I'll just make this last comment. We've got one of the premier hospitals in the country that's wanting to provide medical service to our, our community. And to deny that because we're afraid bringing another party in to talk with Rutherford County EMS, makes absolutely no sense to me whatsoever. Now, y'all know how I feel, and I've worked over this the last six years, and I get passionate, but I, I don't understand how you have a group that's this good, that now we bring the best of both worlds, because you have St. Thomas that's going to be the medical director for Rutherford County, we have Vanderbilt that's going to be the medical director for the city of Murfreesboro. So, you've got the two premier hospitals in the region, and we think that's going to mess up any negotiations that we have with the county. I, that just, I don't understand that.
Mayor, I don't think it's going to mess up anything. I think what you, what you fail to realize is, this just got sprung on us. We just saw this last night, when we, when we first got the agenda. So, I think we need more time to really dig into this, see what we're getting into. I think that's the only thing that I've said, and that's why I hadn't said anything, because we don't want to just push this away like it's not a big deal. It is a big deal.
Absolutely.
And it's a big deal that we get, we get this EMS right for not only Rutherford County, it's for us. We want to do the right thing for our citizens, and we want to do the right thing for Murfreesboro. And that takes us working together and doing the right thing. So, I'd like to put another motion out there. I think we need to sit back.
We'll have to vote on this motion first.
Mayor? Mayor, I agree, Mayor, with what you just said.
Okay, so we have a motion is second. Mr., do you want to...
What's the motion?
Do you want to withdraw your motion to...
Deny the contract.
Let me ask a question.
All right, so we have a motion is second, deny the contract. Mr. Martin doesn't want to withdraw, so that means that we need to vote on, yes, sir?
You can make a subsidiary motion.
Pardon?
He was proposing to make a subsidiary motion, which trumps the primary motion.
Okay.
So, just...
Okay.
I'll second, Kurt.
All right.
Yeah, I just want to go back and say, let's take a week off, let's, let's look at this, and then let's do some, do our homework, and then come back, bring it back to the floor.
That sounds like an awesome idea.
So, Madeline, there's a motion, there's a motion to defer.
You second it?
All right, call, call the roll, Ms. Wright.
Let me ask a question. Let me, let me make a comment.
Yes.
And you made a very good point there about this, about Vanderbilt being the premier hospital, you know, facility. What still bothers me is why in the world did we deny Vanderbilt coming here about a month ago with that 48-bed hospital?
We, Madeline, we didn't deny that. That was at the state level, so...
No, no, I know that, but I'm just saying, Vanderbilt is excellent. We should have let them come in. They are, I'm agreeing with you, Mayor. They are fantastic facilities. Yeah.
Ms. Wright, so, so Madeline, we have a motion that we're going to have a motion to defer.
We're deferring the vote on the first motion?
Deferring the vote on, we're, we've got a motion to defer the contract to deny.
Okay.
For the, to deny the contract.
Are we deferring the motion to deny it, or deferring the...
It'd be the motion, it'd be a motion to deny.
No, I thought it over. It's a motion to defer the motion to deny.
And then, and...
I withdraw my second.
Yeah.
Okay, somebody do me a elementary explanation.
So, let's vote on denying it.
Okay.
And then we'll circle back, then we'll circle back.
By this, by this, we are saying that we do not want this service right now. Is that what we're saying?
Yeah, so, Madeline, if we want to get back to deferral, the appropriate vote would be a no vote. I'm not telling you how to vote, but if we want to get back to deferral, the appropriate vote would be a no, no vote. Ms. Wright, please call the roll.
Vice Mayor Skels Harris?
No.
Mr. LaLance?
No.
Mr. Martin?
Yes.
Mr. Shacklet?
No.
Mr. Wade?
No.
Mr. Wright?
No.
Mayor McFarland?
No. Now, do we have a motion to defer?
Yes.
Yes.
All right, we have, Councilman LaLance has a motion to defer, Councilman Wade has a motion, has a second.
Ready?
Yes, ma'am.
You all held my head, women, I'm telling you.
This is a motion to defer consideration of this item.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Skels Harris?
Is it coming back next week, we're saying?
Yes, ma'am.
All right. Yes.
All right. She said yes.
She said yes. Mr. LaLance?
Yes.
Mr. Martin?
No.
Mr. Shacklet?
Yes.
Mr. Wade?
Yes.
Mr. Wright?
Aye.
Mayor McFarland?
Aye.
All right, guys. Thank you.
We're deferring. Okay, now we'll move to new business. Vander, thank you guys for coming. We, we appreciate y'all's expertise. All right, we have ordinance 20, oh, 28, amending the sign ordinance. We have to hold a public hearing. Mr. Holtz?
Good evening, Mayor and council members. Robert Holtz with the Building and Coats Department. We discussed some proposed sign changes to you tonight. I have a Darren Gore-approved PowerPoint for you. He actually hasn't seen it, so. If there's any misspelled words, you can't blame him. So, the proposed sign changes affect several different sections of the sign ordinance. It would be nice if I could go through the ordinance section by section in order that they're listed, but it would only confuse the issue. So, what I've decided to do is group the sections into three different groups. Section 1 and 8 of the proposed ordinance deals with drive-throughs and external customer transaction portals, otherwise known as ATMs. Section 2, or Group 2, will be Sections 2, 5, 6, and 7, which is temporary signs. And the last group we'll talk about is proposed, is signed materials and murals. So, the first group is having to do with drive-throughs and what we came up with as external customer transaction portals. It's also referred to as ATMs, gas pumps, DVD vending machines. Currently, our sign ordinance does not allow them to have video electronic message center signs, so we are going to revise our sign ordinance to allow those types of equipment to have up to a three-square-foot electronic message center sign that uses video. These signs and these devices cannot be more than six foot above the ground. And then the next, oh, this is the wrong PowerPoint. Hang on one second.
Darren Gore, could you help him?
Darren. It's all I got to work with, it looks like. I will do the best I can with what we got. So, the next section has to deal with external customer transaction portals, again, which we refer to as ATMs, where we're allowing the three-foot, square-foot video machine. And then the next section has to do with drive-throughs. Currently, our sign ordinance does not regulate signs at drive-throughs, mainly because in the past, they have just been small signs behind buildings. But here, in the last few years, they've expanded them to two drive-through lanes, and most of them have already started installing electronic message center signs. Back in December, we did a moratorium on enforcing this portion of the sign ordinance. So, several companies have come in and gotten permits to install these signs. Our sign ordinance will allow three different signs at each drive-through lane. The first lane will be a pre-order sign, up to nine square feet. And just so you understand, electronic message center sign is simply a TV screen controlled by a computer. It's not much different than the monitor you're looking at right now. The second sign will be your order station. That sign will be up to nine square feet. It will include up to three-square-foot of video area. And then the last sign they will be permitted to have is the menu board sign that's up to 20 square feet. So, that'll be three signs per drive-through lane. The signs, these signs must be at the, within the beginning of the drive lane and between the first window where they pick up their orders. These signs cannot be more than six foot tall. Do I have any questions on that portion of the sign ordinance? Okay. Group 2 has to do with temporary signs. We have several different types of temporary signs, feather signs, flag signs, sandwich board signs. The type of signs we're talking about tonight, ours were referred to as other signs. They usually post and panel signs, or they're the small signs with the H brackets that you see placed in the ground. Those are the type of signs we're talking about. Currently, the sign ordinance allows those to be 32-square-foot. We're proposing to reduce them down to 16-square-foot max. Currently, height can be no more than 12 feet. We're wanting to reduce that down to six foot. So, that will be a reduction. Now, these signs I'm talking about are for lease signs, could be for sale signs. They are signs that you'll see on construction sites that list the business that's coming, the architect's name, the contractor's name. So, that's what we're proposing to change. The ordinance would, as it's written, allows us to put a six-to-12-month delay in that effect of that portion, Section 6. So, if someone makes a motion to approve this, we would ask that you include either a six-to-12-month extension on enforcement of this section of the sign ordinance. That way, if someone's already put up a 32-square-foot temporary sign, they'll have a six-month, a year to use it before we ask them to take it down. The other section that has changed is materials that can be used for signs. We have now revised the sign ordinance so that painted tires, tires themselves that are unpainted, pallets, whether they're wood or plastic or wire, cannot be used as signs any longer. And then for violations and penalties, we had a stakeholders' meeting at the first of the year. We got more feedback on this one section than anything else. Currently, our sign ordinance, when we confiscate a sign in the right of way, we're required to keep it 10 days. Within that 10 days, the owner of that sign can pay a fee and get that sign back. So, we're required to keep those signs in a secure location. We're required to keep them organized, so that the sign inspectors can find the correct sign and give it back to the person paying the fee. You know, we have to take care of them. We can't allow them to get damaged. We have very few signs that are ever bought back. But when we do, we still have to go down there and dig that sign out and pull it out. So, what we originally proposed was not allowing the signs to be bought back at all. We got a little kickback on that. So, what we're proposing in this ordinance is we'll keep the temporary signs up to five days. And we're basically tripling the fees for buying the signs back. So, a sign that's 500, 5 and 1/2 square feet or less, right now you pay $5 to get back. If this passes, it'll be $15. And then signs greater than 5 and 1/2 square feet, currently you pay 25 to get them back. You'll have to pay up to 75 to get that sign back. And you will have to do that within five days. That'll just make our job a whole lot easier in that small sign closet we have. Keeping them 10 days, it gets full pretty quick.
Hey, Mr. Holtz?
Yes.
Well, it just went away, but I, I wanted to ask you just, I apologize. Do you want us to, if I have questions on this, do you want us to wait till the end, or you want us to stop in the middle?
You can, you can.
Do you want to do that?
I apologize. I don't know how this PowerPoint got messed up, but I was going to stop in the middle of each group and ask if you had questions, but ask a question now.
Oh, yeah, sorry.
That's fine. I apologize.
One of the things, just for my, as I was looking through that part of this, so, so for me, because I think about what our staff is being forced to do as far as taking care of picking up these signs, getting them confiscated, all that kind of stuff, there's kind of a, you know, a baseline, a foundation amount of time and effort that it takes to get a sign. You know, you gotta, you gotta drive out there, you gotta get out, park, get out, go get it, pick it up, get it back to the truck. I guess where I'm going with that is, is it seems to me that $5, and there's no way that we're paying for that employee at five bucks a sign, okay? And so, I, I don't want to be, I don't want the taxpayers to be getting dinged for somebody else making bad decisions about where they put signs. So, I'm good with the 15 bucks. The, the tripling the 25 to the 75 seems a little more aggressive, maybe. I, I absolutely am cool with tripling the 5 to 15, because you, you know, and maybe I'd even go to 20, quite honestly, on the smaller signs, just because of that baseline amount of work that it takes to get there, get the sign picked up. But I probably would prefer to see that $25 number maybe only go to 50 or something, rather than going on and tripling that all the way, because then we're, we're getting our money back, so to speak, on the employee that we're paying, I feel like, and that is, that's just a, for what it's worth, for everybody considers, we're talking through that sign. I want to go and bring it up while it was up in front of us.
No, that's fine. And I'm, and again, I apologize. I had a nice PowerPoint that was flowing really well, and then apparently I loaded the wrong one.
What, what do you think the percentage of signs that are actually picked back up are?
I'm going to say 1% or 2%. And normally, the signs that are bought back are the bigger signs. So, we, right now, we're going out and picking up 4x8 signs that have 4x4 posts going a foot or two into the ground. It takes two guys to go out there. A lot of times, we can't block traffic. So, a lot of times, I may have to carry this thing 100 yards or so, put it in the back of the truck, and carry it back to City Hall. And our sign closet is pretty small, and we got to find a way to put it in there without destroying the other signs. So, that's, the challenging part is not destroying the other signs when we put those bigger signs in there. And then the permit clerks, when someone comes to buy a sign, the inspectors are out in the field. The permit clerks have to go down and dig this sign out, and it's just, it's, it's aggravating.
So...
But I, you know, if you all want to propose a lower fine, that's fine.
Well, let's, let's keep, let's keep talking about it. And I'm, you know, it's whatever council wishes to do there. That was just a thought that popped in my mind. I, I did want to ask one thing, and you've passed that slide. I didn't know if I was going to wait till the end or stop in the middle when I, when I let that one go by.
You're fine, and...
On the, on the number of days, as far as dropping from 10 to 5, I did get some feedback, and, and, look, I'm, I'm a proponent of, of cleaning up some of the sign issues around town, okay? I'm a proponent of that, and I, man, I'm so appreciative of the work. One of the things that did make some sense to me was that if the, if these temporarily allowable signs are allowed to be put out, say, for example, 10 days before an auction or something like that, that if we only allow five days to pick it up, that, you know, they may not know in time to, you know, because you may pick it up the second day, and by the time they're out there coming to the, the seventh day of when that sign's out, we've already chunked it. It does seem to me that we would maybe want to match up, you know, maybe continue to give them... give them that 10 days of storage of just so, just so if we pick it up on day one, at least they know it's gone and they can come get it. Now, that, maybe that means they ought to be looking at their signs more often, but you know, for a company that may have them all over town, they may not just be paying somebody to send them out just to look, see if we picked it up every day, you know? I don't know. It's just a thought I'm gonna throw out there at you. Just that part of it did make a little bit of sense. And I don't know if you've said it yet, but this is something that I kind of asked during that conversation or two that I had about this. And I think those companies are allowed five signs per event.
I think it's three signs per event.
Okay. I was thinking it was like three on a corner, three per corner, like at a time, but I thought they could put five, including like one, and then four of the point, you know, the, the.
Pointer signs.
Yeah, whatever they call, yeah, the ones that point to where you're trying to go to get there. I thought it was one plus four, but I'd be willing to cut that down to one plus three just for my purposes, and I think that would still be probably agreeable if that's what it is.
Though, the event signs or directional signs that you refer to typically aren't that much of a problem.
Okay.
You know, they, they represent a very small portion of what we confiscate.
Okay. I thought that might be the case, but I.
Yeah. The purpose from going from 10 to five days, it's just to reduce how many signs we have in that closet.
I get it.
We literally, when we confiscate signs on Monday, we put them in one stack. On Tuesday, we put them in another stack. So we got 10 stacks in this four-by-eight closet that locks, and it's just, it's very complicated and difficult.
I get it, and I apologize. I don't mean to be taking over this part of the discussion.
No, I'm glad I made sense to you, and I like the feedback.
I'm, you know, look, I don't know if there's a way. It seems to me part of the problem is people just don't know where the right of way is. And, and I, I don't know if there's something, if our GIS map, if there's some kind of something that we have that we could provide to the companies that are doing this most often. And, and you know, honestly, if we're doing that, without us, I don't know if that's the right thing to say, but if we're doing that, I feel a heck of a lot better about dinging them, but.
Anybody that comes back and picks up a sign, we explain to them how to find the right of way. We tell them, "Go to GIS, and they can find."
It's on the GIS map.
Yes, it is, it is.
Yeah.
All right, I've got one more question before you continue on.
Sure, please.
Most of these signs that y'all pick up, I assume, unless they're like campaign signs, have, if they're real estate or whatever, have a phone number on them. To increase pickup times, has anybody ever thought of why that guy's picking the sign up, hit his cell phone up and say, "Hey, we're picking your sign up on Memorial. You want to come get it?" That way, it increases the amount of people that come get them, which increases the revenue also.
Yeah. If there's a large number of the same sign out, like, I don't want to name names, but you know, if we see a company putting out a large number of signs, we'll call them. We'll call them and let them know, but usually on individual signs, we don't.
There was a stakeholders' meeting about this ordinance.
Yes, you were there, yeah.
Yeah, and there are a lot of people that had input to what you're presenting to us tonight, so, and I think the ones that regularly had problems had a lot of input, and I think they kind of, they wanted to do right. They didn't, they weren't trying to be outside of that, so I think, you know, some of this consideration. I don't know, the one thing about the fees, I don't think the, looking at recovering an adequate fee to pay for our staff's work effort is realistic, because like you say, a very small proportion of those signs are ever tried to be retrieved, so, I mean, the fee is not necess, it's more of a.
Deterrent.
Deterrent than it is a recovery of, of cost. So, you know, I'm not sure, you know, that, that, the four-by-eight signs are, they're so expensive, that's what they were saying at the stakeholders' meeting, they're so expensive, it's, you know, they need a way to recover those. But the smaller signs, they're more than likely not going to do it.
Yeah, I mean, we've had one person come back and buy a backyard sale sign because their daughter had drawn it.
Doesn't matter, yeah.
And it meant something to them, but. The last item before I forget has to do with murals. Currently, the sign ordinance only allows a mural on two sides of a building. We're changing it so you can put it on all sides of the building but the front. And then the other change is we're clarifying, mainly because of buildings on corner lots, we're clarifying what the front of a building is, and that's the exterior wall that's substantially parallel to the road to which the building is addressed. So if it's a corner building, we know which one's the front, so, but.
That makes sense. We've got two corner buildings that have recently put up murals that look, look great, one at the Exchange Boutique and one at Kirk Katrin's law firm on the corner of, I guess that'd be Lidl and Walnut.
Yeah.
Looks good.
Yeah, they're popping up all over the place. They're nice, we like them.
Not that I'm giving advertising for those businesses, but they do look pretty cool.
All right, any questions? All right, we need to hold a public hearing. If you are wishing to speak at the public hearing, if you'll come to the podium, state your name, address. If you're speaking on behalf of an organization, you'll have five minutes as an individual. You have three minutes. If you'll keep all your questions directed directly to the city council, we'll get those listed down, and we'll get your questions at the end. Anyone wishing to speak for or against, please come to the podium. Sorry. I missed.
You scared me. Just coming your way.
All right, see you now. We'll close the public hearing. We'll now consider on first reading ordinance 20028.
Move for approval.
Second.
Motion is second. Ms. Schreit, please call the roll.
Vice Mayor Skels Harris.
Aye.
Mr. LaLance.
No.
Mr. Martin.
No.
Mr. Shacklet.
Aye.
Mr. Wade.
Aye.
Mr. Wright.
No.
Mayor McFarland.
Aye.
All right, we'll move to ordinance 20OZ01, zoning of approximately 78 acres for property located along Northwest Broad Street. This is from a public hearing that we had back in 2000, it was earlier this year, still 2020.
2020.
Yeah. All right, and so we'll need, we've already done the public hearing, so after Mr. Blomley talks to us, we do need to consider this on first reading.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor McFarland, and good evening, Mayor, and members of council. Just to refresh your memory, we've got the map of the area that is up for zoning. The annex, companion annexation was approved, the annexation and plan of services were approved on April 30th after a public hearing. We held a public hearing on the zoning request on April 30th as well. It was, I think it was our, one of our Zoom council meetings, and the city council voted to defer action at that time. Just to orient you a little bit, this is along Northwest Broad Street, near the northwest city limits. There's a portion of it that's already in the city limits. The area colored in orange is zoned light industrial. The area colored in olive is RS15, and the area colored in red is currently in the, in the county. If the zoning is approved, then that area will come into the city limits as it has been already voted on to be annexed. If the zoning does not go into effect, then the, then the annexation of the back portion of that tract will not go into effect. Since the April 30th council meeting, the applicant has made several adjustments to the, to the plan, and I believe Mr. Taylor would like to go over those adjustments with you, the revisions to the plan. I'll be happy to answer any questions. I mentioned Mayor McFarland, no public hearing is necessary because we held a public hearing on this matter on April the 30th. And so with that, unless you have any questions for me, invite Mr. Taylor.
Thank you, Mr. Blomley, Mayor, members of the council, Matt Taylor of SEC. I'm accompanied tonight by the applicant, my client, Dr. Horton, as well as some of the landowners. We do appreciate the time to be in person here tonight instead of over Zoom like we were last time. I think that was y'all's first Zoom public hearing, so I'm glad we're past that. We've spent the last several months addressing the concerns that we heard at the public hearing. We think that we've addressed those concerns and made our project better at the same time, so we'll go through those. The first and largest change that we've made was to decrease the density by about 78 homes. That's about a 25% reduction, nearly a 25% reduction. That puts our overall density at 4.06, down from, I think it was 5.3 previously. The bulk of that decrease came in the elimination of 81 townhouses. The remainder was the six single-family detached. When you combine this with the commercial portion of the project, it puts us at what I'd call a sewer density of about 3.9 units to the acre. Those decreases in density immediately reduces the impact of all services, whether it be roads, sewer, schools, or rolling services. We further increased the quality of our homes. Inside of your booklets, you'll see a commitment for more brick or stone on the front facades. We've updated those renderings to include that. We further address some concerns of the incompatibility next to the industrial by increasing our distance from the townhomes to that property line to be a minimum of 50 feet. Inside of that 50 feet, we'll have at least a five-foot-tall berm, and we've maintained the same level of plantings that we had before. Those buffer enhancements will mitigate impacts from the neighbor on our residents as well as bring our proposed buffer more in compliance with more recently approved buffers that have the same situation. We relocated some of our dwellings outside of the floodplain. And then with the relocation and elimination of dwellings in the project, we've been able to provide better view sheds on our entry road. We now have about an 800-foot stretch of road that does not have any structures or lots planned along it. It'll just be an open view shed, open space, down to overall creek, to try to take advantage of some of those wonderful views. All these changes, of course, have allowed us to increase the neighborhood's open space. We're now over 50% open space for the project. And then to try to address some of the service concerns that were brought up at the public hearing, we've offered to install a camera on our traffic signal pole to allow rolling services to know when that railroad would be blocked at the single road crossing. We've done all those, and we did not take away any of our previous commitments. Well, we still plan to install turn lanes and signals on Broad Street. We continue to offer that we'll do the entire development for private trash pickup, therefore reduce an impact on solid waste. Our amenity package has remained the same, the timing of those amenities remain the same. And then we remain committed to the commercial component of the project, so we complete the mixed-use vision on the property. I think inside your council's agenda packet, there were about three staff comments that I'd like to address. The first was incompatible use with the adjacent industrial, that this application creates an incompatibility where none exists today. We would contend that that, this property already has that incompatibility with the way it is zoned today. We're merely redrawing those lines and adding extra protection for the residential portion. Our design respects that incompatibility and addresses it by requiring additional separation, additional birmingham, additional landscaping, all equate to about three times greater than what the zoning ordinance would require in a similar situation. Further, our residents will have the advantage of knowing full well who their neighbors are and what the use is next door before they buy, much less move in and start living here. One of the concerns in the staff comments, I think, was an architectural concern. We feel like their architectural designs have been developed, modified, and enhanced over many months of meetings and countless conversations with not only staff, but as well as planning commission through the process. All this effort, we feel, has produced a very attractive offering on both the detached and the attached townhomes. The collaboration between our design team, staff, and planning commission, we feel has produced a very superior product that'd be desirable for many homeowners for years to come. Further, we felt that the architecture was well received by this body at our public hearing. We had no comments from staff at that time, and we had zero conversation by the council during that meeting, so we hope that our interpretation is correct. We do acknowledge that our proposed development has front-entered garages, but that's been consistent throughout this project's history and the approval process. The only thing that we have done is add extra detail and extra commitment to make those garages and the overall architecture better. And lastly, I think there was concern over plan of services, which echoed some of the concerns we heard at your public hearing. We've spent the time since that public hearing, tried to address those concerns of services and alleviate some impacts. So while we acknowledge that any development, regardless of where it's at or the type, has impact on services, we have attempted to lower our impact through several offerings, such as having the private trash pickup, which would negate any concern of how far the trash trucks have to go to load or unload. We've offered the camera to install so the emergency services know when that train is blocking the rail. That'll benefit not only our development, but the existing city businesses along this stretch of Northwest Broad, or any motorists that happens to travel through this stretch. And lastly, again, we've decreased our density by nearly 25%, which immediately lowers your impact on services by the sheer reduction in residents. So we, we hope and trust that we heard your concerns appropriately, and that we've addressed them, and would ask for your vote tonight. I'll be happy to answer any questions now or at any point.
Any questions, Mr. Taylor?
I haven't been here for the whole discussion, so I'm gonna sit this one out and not comment one way or the other, but.
Thank you, Mr. Taylor.
Thank you.
Do we have a motion?
If there are none, I'll make a motion to approve. As presented.
I'll second.
Second.
All right, motion is second. Ms. Schreit, please call the roll.
Vice Mayor Skels Harris.
Aye.
Mr. LaLance.
Aye.
Mr. Martin.
Aye.
Mr. Shacklet.
Aye.
Mr. Wade.
Aye.
Mr. Wright.
Upstaying.
Mayor McFarland.
Aye.
All right, we'll now move on to mandatory referral of right-of-way abandonment along Esther Lane.
Thank you, Mayor McFarland. Our first mandatory referral this evening is for, it's kind of a discrepancy that we found in the right-of-way width of Esther Lane. It's directly adjacent to the county highway department property. Here we go. So Mr. Taylor actually brought this before us, one of his clients that owns the property that's located at the northwest corner of Rutledge and Esther, across from the highway We found out that there was discrepancy in that this was actually platted as an 80-foot right-of-way, a 60-foot right-of-way is all that is needed, and there was some confusion about the actual right-of-way width. Staff polled the various service providers, the utilities, the other departments, really found that this 10-foot on both sides of Esther Lane for this segment that goes from Rutledge Way to the western boundary of the highway department property, 10 feet on either side of that, of Esther Lane is really surplus right-of-way. Planning commission held a public hearing on the abandonment of the right-of-way, both in the, in the blue color on the, on the map before you, which is what Mr. Taylor and his client requested, as well as the additional area in the red that, that staff included as additional right-of-way to be abandoned, because it was similarly situated to the requested right-of-way, and we felt that, that it was appropriate to abandon as well as it was no longer needed. There are some recommended conditions of approval. I won't bother reading all of those conditions, I'm sure much to your disappointment, but I will mention that we would recommend approval subject to those conditions, including that a 10-foot public utility easement along the abandoned right-of-way be retained to accommodate any existing utilities in that right-of-way, as well as subdivision plats to incorporate the abandoned right-of-way into the, into the adjacent properties. I'll be happy to answer any question. As I mentioned, planning commission did hold a public hearing and recommended the approval of this matter. No public hearing is necessary at the city council level.
Ronnie, I understand this, but if we could ask anyone who's making a motion to make it subject to staff comments, that would be great.
Thanks, Mayor. Did you see that?
Huh?
Did you see that, or did I tell you?
No, you didn't tell me.
No.
I just, you know, from the days of being on planning commission, you always make your comments subject to staff comments. So, do we have a motion subject to staff comments?
Sure do.
Second. Motion is second. Ms. Schreit, please call the roll.
Vice Mayor Skels Harris.
Subject to staff comment, yes.
Mr. LaLance.
Aye.
Mr. Martin.
Thanks, Madeline. Aye.
Mr. Shacklet.
Aye.
Mr. Wade.
Aye.
Mr. Wright.
Aye.
Mayor McFarland.
Aye. Now we have a mandatory referral of abandonment of a sanitary sewer easement along East Fine Street.
I also will accept subject to whatever Matthew wants to, I think that's good.
Subject to Matt's comments?
Yes, I like that. Yes, I like that. Our next mandatory referral is for a sanitary sewer easement for its abandonment. It's located at the southwest corner of the intersection of First Avenue and East Vine Street. This was actually recorded with a plat. This was all one property, and the previous owner subdivided the property into two lots of record. There needed to be a sanitary sewer easement in order to serve the new lot that he created at the rear, which is back here. He since sold that property. The new owners want to be able to combine it back into one lot of record. That sanitary sewer easement, which is 28 feet in width, is not needed any longer because there's no lot for it to serve. It's unnecessary. The Water Resources Board voted to recommend the approval of this easement abandonment at its August meeting. Planning Commission last Wednesday also voted to recommend approval of this easement abandonment. We do have some recommended conditions of approval, and we would ask that City Council approve the request subject to all staff comments, if it pleases the council.
Motion to approve subject to all staff comments?
Second.
Motion second. Ms. Schreit, please call the roll.
Vice Mayor Skels Harris?
Aye.
Mr. LaLance?
Aye.
Mr. Martin?
Aye.
Mr. Shacklet?
Aye.
Mr. Wade?
Aye.
Mr. Wright?
Aye.
Mayor McFarland?
Aye. Mr. Blomley, when would you like to schedule public hearings?
All right, we've got, we've got six total. I think after consultation with Mr. Tyndall, we would recommend that these be split up into two nights. So A and F, we are recommending for October the 22nd or October 29th, and B, C, D, and E, either on October 29th or November 5th. So you have three dates at your disposal, but B, C, D, and E would have to be the latter of those two dates because of the annexation component on those. So the 22nd, or the 29th, or the 5th would all, would all work.
I will make a motion that we take care of A and F on October the 22nd?
Second.
Motion second. Ms. Wright, please call the roll.
Vice Mayor Skels Harris?
Aye.
Mr. LaLance?
Aye.
Mr. Martin?
Aye.
Mr. Shacklet?
Aye.
Mr. Wade?
Aye.
Mr. Wright?
Aye.
Mayor McFarland?
Aye. All right.
And B through E on either the 29th or the 5th?
So moved.
On the, which day?
25th.
Or November the 5th.
5th?
Yep.
Second.
November 5th.
Yeah.
Good news is, it's close to Halloween, but this year everyone's wearing masks, so we'll be in great shape. All right, we have a motion of second for November 5th.
Vice Mayor Skels Harris? Mr. LaLance?
Aye.
Mr. Martin?
Aye.
Mr. Shacklet?
Aye.
Mr. Wade?
Aye.
Mr. Wright?
Aye.
Mayor McFarland?
Aye.
Thank you.
All right, we now have a grant for Jordan Farm Soccer Facility amenities. Mr. Williams?
Thank you, Mayor, members of council. Before you tonight for consideration is an agreement with the Tennessee Department of Environment and Conservation for a $250,000 LPRF grant. Council approved the grant application and committed matching funds through resolution on April 21st, 2016. This grant was awarded to construct restroom and pavilion facilities at the Jordan Farm Soccer Fields at Richard Siegel Soccer Complex, along with walkways, site furnishings, and utilities. The facility has been designed by Griggs and Maloney and is ready for a competitive bid, and the city's matching contribution is allocated in existing CIP funds. I'd be glad to answer any questions that you have.
It's a really good deal, Nate.
Yeah, good work. Good job. So moved.
Second.
Motion second. Ms. Schreit, please call the roll.
Vice Mayor Skels Harris?
Aye.
Mr. LaLance?
Aye.
Mr. Martin?
Aye.
Mr. Shacklet?
Aye.
Mr. Wade?
Aye.
Mr. Wright?
Aye.
Mayor McFarland?
Aye.
Thank you.
All right, any beer permits?
No, sir.
Nobody drinking. All right, board and commission appointments, we have none. I did send y'all an email that we, longtime member of the Gateway Commission, Boyd Evans, who is a professor also at MTSU, passed away two or three weeks ago. The Gateway Commission does not meet very often, but that is a commission that deals with all excess land sales in the city, so if you have any recommendations for that board, that would be great. We have two vacancies that need to be filled on there. Any bills that need to be paid?
Not tonight.
Any other business?
Mayor, I have...
Yes, ma'am.
I would like to make a motion to reinstate the administrative directive made by City Manager Craig Tyndall regarding the face mask or face covering until the council decides to rescind the policy.
We have a motion. Do we have a second?
I'll second.
All right, any discussion?
Can we go back to, what did she ask?
She wants to instate a mask mandate in City Hall.
Oh, we need to discuss that?
Yes. Yeah, sure.
And the reason why, Mayor, I received several calls with people saying that they do the, some of the illnesses they have that they don't want to disclose, and the feeling uncomfortable there, whereas they were comfortable before.
Mr. Tyndall, is, do departments, I know we all, I don't know for everyone, I had a conversation with our city attorney, but do departments have the ability, if they want to wear a mask, to wear a mask?
Well, anybody within the city who feels like they want to wear a mask can certainly wear a mask. Departments, if they have special circumstances, certainly can discuss or implement policies that would make the employees within that department feel comfortable. Our facilities are very different all across the city. There's lots of different types of facilities across the city, so at this point, given the data we have on the coronavirus and where we're at within the county, which just ended its mask mandate this week, on Tuesday, I felt it was a good idea at this point in time to relieve the employees of, of the mask mandate itself, but masks aren't prohibited. They certainly can be worn, and I know that there are departments, there is a department at least, who wants to have additional, I'd say, protection or additional measures put into place for the coronavirus, and we discussed that, and that's fine. There's, there's no, no issue with that.
Okay.
Just to make sure I heard that right, and I'm sorry, I was looking for a graph while you were speaking. So if a, I think I agree completely, you know, it's kind of like this whole thing about the nationwide thing. I mean, I'm not sure you're supposed to treat Montana the same as New York City or whatever, you know? They just don't seem to be the same thing to me, but same thing would take part in your departments within City Hall here, within the city, right? So just to make sure I'm clear on it, what would be the process? I think what I heard you say was if a director-level, I guess, type person would be able to say, okay, for my department, I would like to have everybody wear masks. Is that kind of the end of the story, or does that come up the chain and you approve it or disapprove it, or? I just don't know. What does that look like?
You know, I don't know if it, it's, well, there's nothing formally in place now, but if, if a department, like I said, any employee decides to wear a mask, they can wear a mask. I mean, that's, it's never been an issue. But if there is, you know, measures to be put into place for the department, then the department director would need to be involved in, in implementing that, only because that logistically, that's what it would take to, to have the entire department address that. If it's some type of extraordinary burden on operations, or how they interact with other departments, then I would expect that they would talk to at least the executive director, or me, or one of the assistant city managers, or someone to, to discuss that, because it would be interdepartmental. It wouldn't just be between, within one department. So I think, yeah, it would be somewhat ad hoc, but certainly we would take into consideration the circumstances of the department and what they need to do, and how, what they feel like they need to do to protect themselves, if they feel like they need to do that.
And another reason why I was making the motion, some of the employees are saying that people are contracting the virus, and they just feeling, they're just not feeling comfortable with not going back to the way they were until, at least until things get better.
We have had positive, we have employee base of almost 1,000 employees. We've had positive tests. We've had a couple of cases where they had some short-term hospitalization, but that's only two out of, out of 1,000. We haven't had, we've had some facilities, and these are facilities where the employees are living together, so that's, it's, you know, they've had some issues there, but they've been addressed and addressed quickly, and there hasn't been any extraordinary circumstances that have come from that. Other than that, we haven't had what you would call, I suppose, an outbreak or a big issue in any particular department that's been spread out. There's no indication that, other than some special circumstances on different facilities, that it was related to the workplace, or could, could have been related to the workplace. So, you know, I, I'm not sure that we're doing a whole lot by having a mandate that applies all across the city. Again, we have a variety of different facilities, and, you know, we're addressing those as we need to address them.
Hey, Matt, sorry, Ronnie.
You're good.
Madeline, you just made a comment, and I, I guess this would be pretty important to the discussion and the decision. You kind of made, well, you made a comment that said you, you want to keep the mask mandate until things get better. You know, clearly, things are better than they were six weeks ago, for example. You know, our average cases have gone from being, you know, 110 a day to about 40 a day in the county, so, I mean, more than, they've decreased by 60, 65%. I, I'm not, you know, I don't know, I guess I'm just trying to ask it, what would be your, what kind of is your thought process on your definition of better, and does it, or do you just think, well, until you just feel like it feels better to you, and then we'll, and then we'll make another decision?
Well, the CDC is talking about, you know, they were talking about the particles still being in the air, that people don't realize that, and people are very aware of it. You have people that are, their immune system just does not, will just not take contracting it, and so the close proximity some of these employees say they are to each other, they can't social distance, so maybe I should have taken that out. They are just not feeling comfortable with no mask.
So could we, instead of doing a citywide thing? Sorry, Wade. Yeah, let me jump in. Just from my second and from my perspective, obviously, my concern is, and this was hard for me, by my own admission in the very beginning, I don't particularly care to wear a mask, I don't really want to wear a mask, and I wasn't crazy about being mandated to wear a mask, but when I step back a little bit from that and think about how others feel that I'm around, and when I think about things that I do that might put people, you know, that, at risk because I'm exposing them, whether it be, you know, family members or children, and as we talk about our school systems, you know, we've got teachers and kids wearing masks, I just think it is not an unreasonable precaution for us to take as a city to, you know, maybe something like, rather than say, hey, here's the target, we do this every 30 days, and say, do we feel comfortable that, you know, we're beyond the point where we don't think it's necessary? Because while, to Rick's point, you know, things are better, there's no question, how do you define, you know, the target to say, we don't need this anymore? I don't know that any of us know the answer to that, but I do know that there are some people that are still very concerned. You know, two weeks ago, we had a, our EMS meeting canceled because we had, my understanding, we had COVID issues, and we couldn't meet for the task force. So it's not like that was six months ago. I mean, it was just weeks ago we were dealing with that. So I think it's a reasonable precaution, but obviously, the council will have to make the decision.
Well, the only control we have is on our own facilities and city buildings.
Yeah, right.
You know, and that, that was, the question I would ask Craig is, is, did we establish some parameters for making the decision to, or did we just go along with what the county did? Was it, was it, was it your judgment, or did we, before we decided to take that mask mandate, or the mask requirement in city facilities, did we already know what those numbers were going to look like, or did we just, just make a judgment?
Yeah, unfortunately, there's no measure or metric that's been set where we, on, at any level, as to when, as Councilmember LaLance said, when people would feel comfortable. So, but we did implement it along with the county. When the county did the mask mandate, we went, and that's when we implemented the administrative directive for, for the city employees to follow along, and with the end of that last Tuesday, it seemed natural to, to, to end our, our directive at that point in time.
The, the concern, I think, from the employee standpoint, is not just the work environment, but the fact that, you know, the citizens come in, and if there's not a mask mandate for them, then we're allowing more folks to come in, and without a mask on to expose them, so it's, you know, and everybody's comfort level is going to be a little different. I realize that, so I, you know, I...
And that's, and not having a county mask mandate, then, you know, people would approach City Hall and not have masks with them, or not be prepared to have masks, and so then it becomes, you know, we can provide masks, we've purchased masks, we can provide masks, but it, then it becomes a sticking point with some people as to whether or not they have to wear them or not, because there's no other mandate out there that requires them to wear a mask mandate. So, no, it's not, it's not an issue that's an easy call. There are differences of opinions on whether masks do anything at all, or need to be worn, or should be mandated to be worn, and so in balancing all of those considerations, given that there is not a mask mandate now in the county, it felt like it was appropriate to end our mask mandate for, for city employees. And last, like I said, they prefer to wear masks where there's special circumstances, and certainly we can, we can address those. Employees that don't feel comfortable at work, or they have compromised immune systems, we can address those. We have procedures to address those, just like we have also procedures like we would use for the flu, on a flu season, when we would have an outbreak of a flu season for a facility, you know, not exclusive to coronavirus, but at any time, or any, any other type of illness.
My concern, since we don't have any metrics, or we're just arbitrarily making a judgment as to whether it's safe or, or okay to not do that, then the assumption could be made by others, because there's still businesses that require you to wear a face mask. Our school's still going to require you to wear a face mask, so if, if the city leads with that, it's okay not to wear a face mask, then the assumption is, we have a knowledge or some matrix, or some, other than just a shot in the dark, to say, well, it feels like we can go ahead and do it. So, so we kind of lead the, we lead, and the assumption is that we've made the right decision, so, well, and then everybody kind of just, it doesn't become important anymore to, to wear masks, because we said it was okay.
Yeah, it's certainly not an arbitrary decision. That would be a decision lacking any basis whatsoever, so, I mean, there's, we do have a lot of data. Mr. LaLance referred to some of it, you know, we track it every day, and, and watch it very closely. We understand what our employee base, you know, how it's affected our employee base, and what our base is, and what their requirements are for their jobs, so, you know, it wasn't an arbitrary decision. I understand with respect to how, you know, it may be perceived, I suppose, in the public, but again, you know, the, the authority for applying a mask mandate was passed from the governor to the county, and the county's decided that, you know, at this point in time, the mask isn't a requirement, but, and that's, that's the basis for, for the decision with respect to the employee.
Can I, go ahead, Craig.
Mr. Tyndall, did you have a chance to talk to the department heads on this decision at all?
No.
Just to get, just to get some kind of feedback from the employees themselves, from the department heads?
No. No. No, we didn't, didn't talk to the employees. We didn't talk to it when we put the mask mandate in place.
Okay.
We followed, we were following the county, and because there was a lot of merit in trying to be consistent with the county.
Okay. I mean, I get what you're saying, but in theory, the virus is still here, and it's not going anywhere. And I don't, I don't think we should take that lightly, neither. And I get it, people don't want to wear a mask, but I also get it, too. If you look at the death toll, that's pretty, pretty steep. And I do believe that we need to still take some kind of precaution on here, especially here at City Hall, when we got visitors coming in every day, on a daily basis. And I think, I understand what the state has said, and I understand what the county has said, but I also understand, too, that it's our job to make sure that we protect our people in the best way possible. Not saying I know what that is, but...
That's a good question. I would...
The motion on the floor, is it all city properties or just City Hall?
I think Madeline made the motion, so...
I think she said it was City Hall. Madeline, did you say City Hall or all city properties?
Mr. Tindall, when you put it in effect, was it all, wasn't it all city offices?
It was all facilities, yes.
The mask mandate, yeah.
Yeah, I was just going to say, I, you know, I think going back to the governor's executive order of 54, that pushed that down to the county mayor's. My opinion, you know, I think City Hall's a little different than a private business. You know, if you want to, if you want to mandate a mask in your private business, you have the right to do that, because it's your private business. City Hall is not a private business. It's a public facility. And as much as, you know, we may think that you need a mandate here or there, I think ultimately, the governor gave that authority to the county mayor, and the county mayor decided not to, not to extend that mask mandate. And we're governed by public law, and, you know, my, my, my point would be to, it would send a very inconsistent message when the state and the county are saying the mandate's not in place. Now, if you want to go to Publix, and Publix has kept their mask mandate in, Nuke's yesterday, ate lunch there, they had their mask in, and so I had my mask on, but, you know, that's what the private businesses could do. So I would vote no to requiring that.
Do we know if the county is requiring, requiring a mask for county facilities? Does anybody know that?
I think Mayor Ketchard, when talking to him, he was still going to promote the Rutherford Responsible, but I don't think that necessarily was, I mean, they were just going to promote the Rutherford Responsible, which is social distancing and, you know, where you can.
Encouraging, I think.
Yeah, if you're, you know, if you're, and that, but that would be my thing. I mean, you know, if we have a department that has someone that's immunocompromised, then I totally could see why that department would need to wear masks. But at the same time, if someone from the public sector comes into that office, I don't know how we can tell them, put a mask on, when there's not a mandate out to do that. So I don't know what it's going to help when they're not wearing a mask anywhere else they're going, so.
Is there, boy, this may be getting into the weeds too much, but I mean, is there a way to look at the departments? I mean, so first of all, the reason I asked the question about, you know, how do you define better, is because if the answer is, the virus is still in the air, you're never taking your mask off. I mean, you know, the virus is probably going to be somewhere in the air for a really, really, really long time, okay? And so, you know, if we get this thing down to where we only get 10 cases in the entire county of 300,000 people, is that worth mandating that everybody in the county or everybody on our city property wear a mask? You know, I mean, I think you start looking at real data and statistics and all that, and it probably wouldn't warrant it. I mean, you know, if it gets to that number. So, but, you know, if it's 500 out of 300,000 a day or whatever, then all right, yeah, I'm probably going to put a mask on, whether I'm told to or not. So this is obviously no perfect answer. Is there a way to look at the departments? I mean, look, there's going to be people uncomfortable with this, and there's going to be virus in the air for a really long time and maybe forever, whether we're, you know, whether we have a vaccine for or something like that. But if the two parameters are, the virus is still in the air and people are still scared of it, that could be here for some number of many years to come, right? And which I don't think, so that doesn't feel like the right set of parameters for me to make the decision. You know, is there some middle ground here, as far as just kind of, you know, are there, are there a couple of departments that we see that would be the most likely to be? I mean, you know, if you really look at CDC guidelines, there is no reason for a bunch of our departments to be having masks on. I mean, the CDC says, you don't need to wear a mask if you're not within six feet of somebody. That's what the CDC says. Everybody who talks about, listen to the CDC and all that, that's what they say. If you're not with them for 10 minutes in the same room within six feet, I mean, you know, you don't have to wear a mask. And so I, you know, don't quote me on that exactly, but it's, you know, I read it, and it's something like that. So I guess, is there a way to look at it and kind of say, okay, well, this group of people, they, they have to sit in these exact situations, you know, this, this position, and they're only a foot apart from each other? Somebody turn my ringer on. Thanks. Good job. Good work. Good work, Sean. That was awesome. How'd you get my daughter to call me? So, yeah, that was awesome. Where was I?
I don't know.
Just keep going, just keep going. So is there, are there places within, that, all right, so first of all, if there's a department that is, you know, wants to talk about it and wants to, you know, and they're not intermingling with other departments and that creating issue, they can always do like what you've been doing, right? And any kind of necessary change would make. Is there a way we can say, this department, because they're, they got to be one foot apart, and they see 100 people a day coming from the outside, that we could just say, okay, this department should wear them? But it's not necessarily every city facility that has to wear them and every employee?
Or the public.
Yeah, the public, we're not talking about public, though, at all, so.
I mean, you do have...
Oh, in the facility. Yeah, yeah, sorry, sorry, yes.
The positive tests we had in the fire department, you know, where we did cancel our meeting, I mean, that was with the mask mandate in place.
It was with the mask mandate, and, you know, there was negative tests and positive tests out of the same individuals, so I mean...
Yeah, it's just hard right now to know, you know, what...
But is there, I mean, is there a specific group of people that are, that are more susceptible to the, we can't be in, we can't conform to the social distancing? I mean, so here, this would be my, and man, I'm going to be on a roll here for deferring stuff, but, you know, my, my, my take on this is, I don't think that I would vote to put it on everybody in the city, every, every employee and every job in the city, you know, because I just think, you know, look, if I'm, if I'm a guy out on a lawnmower, you know, I'm not that worried about being, having, seeing people come in and the things that I think probably have a little bit more merit about why you ought to have a mask on, okay? So I wouldn't really be in favor of doing it. But I would be, you know, I'd be totally okay if there are people that are in the situation that literally cannot. I mean, I think we ought to be saying, yeah, you got to wear a mask for another 30 days until we make sure we see where this thing's going. We've had a big decrease, and let's give it another month, let kids get back to school for the second semester and see what happens there. I'm cool with that. I mean, where it makes sense are the CDC guidelines. I'm not cool with making...
We weren't asking people to wear one on a mower anyway, right? I mean, we weren't asking people to do that.
Every city facility, every job, I don't know. I, that's...
Well, I mean, I know, and Bill probably can say this, from going to the baseball fields, and, I mean, I was out Saturday, there was a softball tournament, this is before the mask mandate, two Saturdays ago, there was a softball tournament at McKnight Park, and I drove through there, it was a Thursday, Kiwanis was having, there's no one with a mask on. So, I mean, and that's the...
I guess, look, all I'm, then, if we were already, if we already had some hybrid system in place, you know, where if you can social distance, you don't have to wear it. I mean, did our mask mandate say, if you can social distance, you don't have to wear it? And that just seems to open a little bit of the door of the people who go, oh, I...
Yeah, yeah, no, it followed, it followed the CDC guidelines on what the mask requirements were. And, you know, I would, I would leave it to the department directors, and they can look at their facilities and see what they, what they need to do. And if they have employees that feel like they need to wear masks, again, you know, they can wear a mask, or if they feel like that others within the department in the close vicinity, if the department director wants to do that. Again, I'm not stopping it. There's a difference between, you know, allowing and accommodating and doing those things and mandating that I think is important here.
You have, I mean, to your defense, and we've had these conversations, anyone who's had a request, I mean, the city's accommodated those requests, correct?
Yes.
So I... All right, we have a motion, a second.
The bottom line is, though, the bottom line is, people are dying. That's the bottom line. That's the bottom line. People are dying. And my thing is, if you leaving it up to the department heads, Mr. Tindall, what is your department going to do?
The administrative department? The administrative department generally have offices or they're spaced apart, so generally, they haven't had to wear, had to wear a mask as far as our daily activities are concerned. But, you know, we have a very small department, and...
But when you're going out to these departments, what do you do? Do you put your mask on?
Did I put my mask on?
Yes.
And when I sat in my office away from everyone and...
No, no, when you're going out to different departments, are you putting your mask on?
If, if I was going to be out there for more than 10 minutes within six feet of someone, then I would have, I would have put a mask on.
And that's the comments I've been hearing, that you have not put your mask on even with the mandate. I mean, at least...
Well, I'd follow the mandate if I, you know, rarely within six feet for 10 minutes of any individual, most of the time during the day. It's just the nature of my job.
Yeah. And I don't want to give the impression, you know, this is such a divided topic, but, you know, the assertion that there are people dying all over the place in Rutherford County is just not true. We've had 80, as of yesterday, I think we've had 87 people who've died. And don't get me wrong, that's 87 more people than anyone wants to have passed away, but 87 people out of a population of 300 and some odd thousand, when originally, you know, when we, we were all back in March, when, you know, Craig and myself and Adam were on a Saturday going through on how we're talking about shutting the city down, and I met Melissa here to sign, you know, the numbers back in March, it was 2 million people were expected to die. And I'm not saying the 200,000 people that have not died in this country, that is tragic. But, I mean, I don't want to give the citizens the impression that we've got this massive outbreak in the city of Murfreesboro, when right now, I think we have 541 active cases in a community of 300,000. Again, if you're the person and you're one of those 540 people who've got COVID, there's nothing to minimize that. But, you know, at the same time, it is a very, very divisive topic, and there are just as many people who are, I went to Toots on Sunday night, coming back from soccer in Hendersonville, and no one was wearing a mask. So even though Toots says you need to wear a mask, so, and, you know, we didn't, I think we need to be responsible, and there is personal responsibility that comes into that. So, you know, my opinion, if you're, if you're in the city and you're, you've got an issue, then we have shown as a city that we are compassionate to be able to make accommodations, and if you need to wear a mask, wear a mask. But it's going to be really tough to tell the outside public as they come in to planning or they come in to finance, hey, put your mask on, when I guarantee the first person, first thing that's going to be said is, well, there's not a mask mandate in Rutherford County. That, where I think we're putting our staff in a probably just as dangerous as a situation when people are going to come in wanting to fight, that you're, they don't have to wear a mask. So, all right, we have a motion, and a second. Ms. Wright, we need to call the roll. This is a motion to require a mandate.
Vice Mayor Skels Harris?
For city facilities, right?
And can we clarify, is that going to be for, are we happy with 30 days, setting a time limit on it? Madeline?
Uh, no.
So just indefinite?
Yeah, until, you know, things get better. I mean, I don't know when it's going to be. It could be worse than 30 days.
And is that all employees and all facilities?
Yes.
It's to put back what we had.
No, that's not what she said.
Yeah, she said all, all facilities, all employees.
But we, we had that before.
It was a different...
But you were in common areas, you couldn't socially distance. Is this to put...
Can I say something?
Yeah.
I don't know.
Ms. Madeline, let's clarify what you're trying to do here. Do you want to change the policy we had before it went away and do something different? Or do you want to just reinstate what we had before it went away?
Uh, do you all want to do something different? I'll entertain that, if not, leave it the way it was.
What, okay, so her motion is to leave it the way it is, the way it was.
Okay.
All right, Ms. Wright, please call the roll.
Vice Mayor Skels Harris?
Aye.
Mr. LaLance?
No, because I'm not real certain, I don't understand how it was, because I thought it was all facilities. But, all right, no.
Mr. Martin?
Aye.
Mr. Shacklet?
I'm going to say aye.
Mr. Wade?
I'm going to say no, because we're not, we're talking about all facilities.
No, she's, she's talking about instituting what was originally in place.
Well, it was all facilities.
It was all facilities.
Okay, yeah, okay.
Mr. Wright?
No.
Mayor McFarland?
No.
Motion fails.
All right, do we have any other business? All right. See you, none. We'll stay adjourned.